All right, welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs, and please do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed, all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Who is it Donna will be calling tonight's first case?
PB 1506-1, upon the matter request by Bonnie Lloyd for subdivision approval to subdivide a one-acre parcel into two lots on premises 1350 Stanton Lane and an R1 residential district.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Shiraba. I'm with Land Tech, and this evening I'm representing Mrs. Lloyd who's here this evening that can also answer any questions that I cannot. This application is a fairly simple application. This is a, well, it's a simple what we're doing, but it's a unique lot. This lot is a, just about a one-acre lot located at the north end of Stanton Lane, serviced by a private drive. And on this lot, there are two existing structures, two houses. And our proposal is to subdivide that lot into two individual lots. In doing so, those houses, both are served currently by individual leach fields and one drilled well, which is the unique factor of these parcels, kind of unique in this day and age in Arundicote that we have leach fields and wells. But this proposal is just building upon that. The only new physical activity that we're doing is drilling a new well in one of the lots. The economics of the lots and the situation extending water and things like that made it more viable to do it. Separation requirements, though, were tight because of separation requirements from property lines and the leach field. So we received a waiver from Monroe County Health Department for a will, for a wall, excuse me, a well less than 100 feet from a leach field. So they, the health departments reviewed it and approved it. So this evening, we're asking for subdivision approval, as shown on our plan submitted. And that's really, it's kind of a basic approval. No other structures are proposed.
Before we open up to the rest of the board, could you just describe the private drive and the cross-access easements?
Yep. So, right now, there's one driveway that comes in off the north end of Stanton Lane onto our property. So that is to remain as-is. There's no physical change to that. Since we're subdividing the property, we also need to file an easement, so we have cross-access for the two new lots to use the driveway in common. That description's been written, submitted to Bonnie's attorney, and pending approval of the subdivision, that easement agreement will be filed. We expect that we'd want to file that easement prior to the chairman signing the plan, so that you know that it's filed, and we propose to do so.
Are there any questions of the applicant from the board? I'll start with Jay.
No questions.
Rich?
No.
Ray?
No.
No, Ray.
Michael.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time?
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road. I just want to know, how deep will that well be?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in regards to this application?
Hill Valley, 266 Brookview Drive. I'd like to know how fire engines are going to get in and out of that development once it's completed.
Would anyone else like to speak in regards to this application before we get answers to the questions? Seeing none, I will close the public input portion. Town, I don't know if Town wants to address maybe the fire department comment, but...
I mean, it's already an existing, there's no new structures being planned. So, I mean, the same way you would access the site for fire service now is the same way you would in the future.
I guess that was my comment also, because we're not adding structures, we're just subdividing the land and...
In the fire marshal, when we sign, I know it seems arbitrary, but when you sign a map, there's a place for him to, he always, he always looks at these as well. I don't, we're not building a new structure, so...
Okay. John, would you like to address maybe the well comment or the fire department comment?
Yeah, as far as the fire department goes, we have a spot for Mr. Merrick to sign off on the plan, and as I said before, there are no physical changes to the property, so it'll function as it does today. The well, you know, it's, like I said, it's a unique area, it's kind of a well in Arundicote. I don't have a handle, like, I wouldn't want to speak to specific depth. I do, I'm familiar with how wells are drilled, and they usually drill till they have enough water volume. So it could be 30 feet, could be 80 feet. I don't want to handcuff the well driller, but they will do it so that they meet the Monroe County requirements for water quality and quantity.
Mr. Chairman, on the waiver application, there are specific conditions that need to be met to help mitigate the non-compliance, is a deeper well casing and grounding and grading and topography. I don't know if that answers the question about, it's not necessarily the depth so much it is it is, they're gonna, they're gonna...
Methodology?
Reinforce the...
Right.
Reinforce it.
Yeah, it's not a drill, it's a, you know, there's a steel casing, it's not dug well, so...
Right. Are there any other questions of the applicant before we move to motions? Seeing none, the seeker portion, Town staff has gone over the short-form environmental assessment, and ourselves in our preliminary workshop, and we find that there's no or small impact for the key 11 indicators on the part two of the application. As far as the determination of significance, right now, we've stated that the existing lot being subdivided currently contains two principal residential developments. The subdivision will result in each residential dwelling unit being created, being located on a separate lot. The applicant has received the required water supply waiver from Monroe County Health Department, which is needed at this location, and this action will not create any significant environmental impacts addressed through the seeker process. If anyone sees anything different or would like to add anything, we could do so at this time. If not, I'm looking for motion or seeker determination.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to PB 1 and 506-1, I move that this is for secret purposes an unlisted action, negative declaration.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries with one absentia. Now looking for motion as regards to subdivision approval.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. Upon the matter of the request of Bonnie Lloyd for subdivision approval to subdivide a one-acre parcel into two lots, 1350 Stanton Lane and R1 residential district, with the only condition being subject to the signing and filing of the cross-access easement that we've discussed, I would make a motion for approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
PB 1506-2, upon the matter request by Costage Engineering acting as agent for RSM Arundicote Bay Development for subdivision approval, wetland, steep slope, woodlot, floodplain, and water course environmental protection overlay district EPod permits to subdivide a 5.9-acre parcel into two lots on premises 500 Newport Road and the WD Waterfront District.
Okay. Good evening. Do you want me to go ahead and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just was wondering, there's an odd noise, I'm just...
Yeah. Alan Knopf, I'm from Knopf Shaw, attorney for the applicant, and I'm here with Dan Brock from Costage Engineering and Steve Mancini from RSM Development. And we're here tonight to request that the planning board approve a subdivision of this development into two lots. The Newport development, which would include 53 residential units, including nine townhouses and 44 residential units in four condominium buildings, was approved in 2011 after an extensive review. We did a final, we did a draft and final environmental impact statement. The board made, was lead agency and made seeker findings and approved an EPod permit, approved the development, the site plan, and we moved forward. The reason we are here is, well, really, two reasons. One is the EPod permit, there was a three-year expiration, and the town has indicated that we do need to renew the EPod permit. The site work and the EPods actually has been completed, the utility's installed, but we still would have to go back in and to do the actual construction on the larger buildings and to finish the townhouses. Right now, three of the townhouse units are substantially completed, but there would be six more to build. The reason for the subdivision is, I think, explained to the board in the workshops. The New York State Department of Law has certain requirements for the condominium approval, and they do require a 15% pre-sale on the condominiums. I think it's a rule really directed at the condominiums in New York City, but unfortunately for here, what it means is you'd have to have a large amount of pre-sales. So what we're requesting is that this be divided into two, basically into two lots, so we can have two condominiums, and we can sell the townhouse units first and then move on when that is completed, or, you know, to the, to the larger buildings. There would be no change whatsoever in the physical layout. All we're asking for is a dotted line on the piece of paper. The buildings will be exactly the same, the structures, the roads, everything will be exactly the same. We will have some cross-easements back and forth to deal with maintenance of the road and use of the docks and all that. The larger parcel would have control of the docks. We've already taken out the one as a mitigation measure. The dock closest to the, really, to the, to the most northern or north-westerly dock has been removed. We did that as a mitigation measure, so that's been accomplished. The, so that's really why we're here. We're also going to go to the zoning board and request a variance on density because of the, the site capacity worksheets did not come into play previously, and the town has requested that we seek a variance to the extent those might be applicable, but that's not really before you tonight. Really, what we're requesting is one renewal of the EPods permit, which, you know, substantially all the work that would do any, have any impact on the EPods has already been completed. Frankly, the biggest EPod is the, is a wetland buffer, and this site has been disturbed since the mid-19th century. It's been there a long, long time and has been disturbed, so there's nothing really new there, to the extent the hillside and some woodlot was disturbed, that has already happened, and the site was regraded for construction of the townhouses. So really, it's more of a technical thing to extend the EPod permit so that we can get building permits and go ahead and build.
And for purposes from a procedural point of view, is Harter Seacrest, Laura Smith will be the town attorney, the deputy town attorney for this matter, so she will be the counsel on this case. So all questions in that matter, in that regard should go to you.
And we do ask that the board approve the subdivision. We understand that the subdivision approval might, would be contingent on getting the variance from the zoning board, we understand that. The extension of the EPod permit would not need a similar condition that really...
In the, it's open-ended in the way that our code is written in terms of how long you give, there is an expiration date, you give EPod permits, and I guess a question for the applicant would be, is when do you envision the construction being completed? And that would be a logical, the town's recommendation would be that would be a logical end to the EPod vetting deadline.
Well, I mean, we think as long as 10 years it could be. You know, it really depends on the market, how fast these sell.
Okay, well, that's too long, so I guess...
But I guess we don't...
But I would leave that to the board to decide what would be, but that would be our recommendation would be if there was a foreseeable end date, is that you would...
Right. I guess we don't, I guess we don't really see why there should be, is the code require an expiration date?
Yes, it does.
So...
Yeah, it's written right in there.
You know, like, but, but the longer, the better, because, you know, we, for the, the townhouses should be complete, I would expect, like, next year, and then we move on to the larger buildings, but it really depends on how fast, we'd be happy if it was all done in three years, but, you know, it's really going to depend on the market forces, how fast the units sell. But again, the EPod extension is not at all contingent on the, on the zoning variance, so there should not be a condition, there's no need for a condition on that. We understand on the subdivision, you would, you would need a condition, and we would be done here and have to visit the zoning board next month, so...
What is the, what is the pre-sale number for, that would be required for the development as it stands today?
Well, it's 15%, so that would be, what is it, 50, there's 53 units, so, do my quick math, I think we would need, would we need 10 or 9? Eight? Eight, thank you, eight? They probably round up, but, okay. Five, yeah. So...
So that's, in the townhouse building, townhouses are how many?
Nine. So we'd essentially have to sell almost all of them. And the difficulty is, as you probably know, you know, one, getting the buyers, but then telling them, oh, you gotta wait till we sell all these other units until we can close and just sit patiently while we try to find neighbors for you, you know, and that itself. So the extent we can make it smaller, we'd only need to sell two out of the nine, and then we can move forward on the townhouses.
Are any of the townhouses sold?
No, because we can't, we're not allowed to sell them, because of, we need, we need the condominium approval, and without the condominium approval, we cannot sell, so we had to stop work basically because of this.
Are there any questions of the board? From the board? Jay?
Yeah, I have two questions, Mr. Chairman. The first question is, were you, is there a way to get, instead of doing this, there's no way to get a waiver for the condominium, the 15% requirement?
I don't believe so. I'm not the condominium expert, actually, but our condominium lawyer seemed to indicate that, I don't think he thought that was at least feasible. Whether there's, there's a, maybe there is a procedure, I don't really honestly know.
And that's through the Attorney General's office, and that's a pretty strict process for a variety of reasons, they have nothing to do with upstate New York necessarily, but that's a pretty strict process they adhere to. And that's not from this experience, that's just common, that's knowledge of the process in general, that's not from this, so...
And then the other question I have, Mr. Chairman, is that with respect to the Homeowners Association, because this is going to be two separate properties now, is it still going to be just one homeowners association that's going to determine the rules and bylaws of the properties, or is there going to be two?
There would be two, and the one for the larger buildings, which, you know, that property's going to be owned by RSM for the time being, that would control the docks and be responsible for the maintenance of the docks and all that, and we would have an easement kind of agreement with the other HOA through the condominium association to allow the use of the docks.
Who's going to be maintaining the steep slopes?
Well, I think that would be the townhouse HOA, right?
Good evening, Steve Mancini. Initially, there will be, what we would do is set it up as two separate HOAs, and then ultimately, at the completion of the project, is merge them. And just one other correction, there's 54 units, it's nine in 45.
And you're thinking right now is the townhouses would be solely responsible for the slopes, and then the condo buildings, if you will, would be solely responsible for the docks?
Um, yes, initially, but eventually, we're going to merge them.
So once everything is sold, then you would merge?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I mean, with respect to the EPod, I mean, I don't know what a reasonable amount of time to build this is, but I'm thinking it's somewhere around five years. If you have to do it in two stages like they do, that's, I was thinking something along that line. But I don't know if that's, I don't know what everybody else thinks. It's already been going on for about five years, so...
Is it three or five, Jay? Curious, why did it come over five, just out of...
Because they've got to, they've got to build the townhouses first, then they've got to sell them, and then they've got to build the other stuff, which, I mean, so it's going to take, you know, I don't know if you, it's just a number. It's less than 10.
I mean, if the townhouses take one year, and each building after that would take a year, that's four years, so I would think five years would be reasonable.
That was the number I was thinking, but I was wondering, does Town staff or does the deputy town attorney have an opinion on this?
Yeah.
As far, because they're the ones that...
I mean, I was going off a number I read in the paper, truthfully, when it said 2019, so I, I was using that number, but I would...
And it is renewable.
Yeah, so you'd renew it after...
So it would come again before the planning board, so it's not, as we're seeing here, it's not a definite amount of time, but it's another time, the planning board and the...
Rich, did you have any questions?
That, that's it.
Ray?
I would say four or five makes, from a practical standpoint, makes sense.
Okay, just curious. My questions are more for county attorney, as it relates to seeker. This is a new subdivision, basically, a new subdivision. We're saying that seeker has already been done on this, and we don't have to revisit it as it relates to density, steep slope.
I think the way we're looking at this is because of the nature of the project hasn't changed in terms of a physical component. So you look at, from a seeker perspective, you look at what is the action before you that is affecting the environment. So the action here is you're putting lines, from a rudimentary standpoint, you're putting lines on a map. So is that changing the seeker determination that the EIS laid out? From our perspective, that since you're not making any change to the physical project, that there is no change in the environmental impact that was laid out in the EIS. If there was a change in the project in some way, say they were putting up another building or there was different physical components of the project, then that would be a change from the EIS. But the EIS looked at the physical changes to that property that are laid out, that are the same here. So we've determined there's no, from a staff perspective, there's no change in the environmental impact that would be achieved from putting the lines on a map.
That was already reviewed in the FEIS, so it's not that the recommendation is seeker's not being done, it's that seeker was already being done, but it is at the board's discretion. So the board can, needs to determine whether or not the FEIS that was done in 2009 would incorporate the action that's being asked of today. And if you do not feel, if you do not feel that way, and I need to be clear, this is your decision as the planning board to look at the FEIS that was done in 2009 as the seeker determination for this particular project.
Yeah, you'd have to feel, if you felt that the project was substantively different from a physical standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, then by all means, if that's your...
I guess what I'm asking for, Nick, is not, I think it would be a very easy review. Certainly, I'm not asking, do we need to do another EIS by any means? But do we have to apply something to this subdivision? Because if I'm not mistaken, by New York State law, when you have a subdivision or our own town code...
Sure.
You have to have...
Oh, no.
The seeker element to it.
No, no, we, that's, and that's what this is, but I get, and that's where I'll come back to what I just said, is that if you felt that the EIS that was done for the original project was in, is substantively different in some way from what is before us today, then that is for the boards...
In essence, we are making a finding, determination as it is to seeker, in that the finding is that there's no appreciable change.
Correct.
I mean, so we are doing completing seeker by, if that's the way we choose to go, by saying...
Correct.
Correct.
That our seeker finding is that there's been no appreciable change to the previous FEIS.
So do we, what I'm trying to get to, Mr. Chairman, is do we reference the previous one in our...
Absolutely.
Certainly, yes.
Is that where we're going?
No.
There's no change in density, there's no change in, you know, steep slope, nothing. We're referencing what we've done before...
This is all thing, these were all things that were addressed in the original EIS, unless you felt differently.
No, I don't, I'm just saying, but we reference all of that to make it...
Correct.
Because it is a subdivision, right?
Well, yes.
All right, I just want to...
Yeah, if I could, really, the question is whether changes in the project might result in significant adverse impacts, so that were not addressed in the FEIS. And since in this case, all we're doing is drawing a line on the paper, it wouldn't, you know, again, if, as Nick said, if we were adding a building or something, that would be different.
I'm just asking procedurally to make sure that...
Yeah, so I think you could make a finding that there's nothing different, really, from an environmental standpoint, basically, that...
For this approval.
For the, yeah, right.
For the planning board.
Again, I'm just looking procedurally.
And I would urge you to reference, and I have this here and I'm welcome to share it, I have the resolution from 2009 that we approved that seeker, or I'm sorry, made our finding pursuant to seeker for the FEIS, and I would recommend that we would reference this specifically, saying pursuant to this resolution, the project was found to have these findings, and if you don't have it in front of you...
And we see no material changes?
Correct.
In other words, right, okay. I just, again, wanted to clarify that.
Ray, did you have another, any more questions?
No, no, that's it.
Michael?
I was going to say what you just did, and in our workshop, this is the conclusion we came to after much debate, that there was no difference in the physical appearance of, there wasn't even a new line drawn. So everything that we approved in '09 is the same as we're looking at again now. It looks like it was just something put on hold, if I can use that word, for these past six years, and nothing has changed in their presentation and their, what they're looking at or anything else, except a state requirement that says something about crossing i's and dotting t's that has to do with what comes first, the horse or the cart.
And I'll also point out, we'll have the same conversation with the zoning board of appeals regarding the ZBA application for the area variance. So in terms of i's and t's, we'll have that same conversation with them as well.
Mary, or am I calling, are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done, thank you.
Ray?
I'm all set.
At this point, I'd like to open up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time.
Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time.
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road. I just wondered whether both the townhouses and the large buildings are designated as condos, and is it possible that the townhouses could be sold not as condos, but as regular holdings? Thank you.
Do you want to address that question before we continue with other public?
So, the entire project, as you know, originally was approved as a condominium project, and the whole, so the whole project would remain that way, including, and we refer to them as townhouses strictly for a description, because they're a townhouse style, and the other, we just call it condominium style, but the whole thing is condominiums.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak in regards to this application? You look like you're thinking about it. No? Anybody? Okay. At this point, we'll close public input with regards to this application. Jay, you're still looking at that Seeker determination? Well, I'm trying to formulate a response, basically. And so, if, I'm just going to talk, and then, then I'll make a motion, all right? So, if you don't mind, are we done? We can talk. All right. So, I guess first off, do you want to do the EPOD determina...
All right, so now, what, is this a, I mean, we're not calling this unlisted type two or type one, we're...
It would be a reference back, if, again, I want to again say it's in the board's discretion.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in the board's discretion to make your determination, so it would be pursuant to the resolution, we would find that the Seeker, the planning board has already, I'm sorry, without it in front of me, has had these findings in 2009 pursuant to this resolution.
Part of the EIS, yeah.
This part of the, in the submission of the FEIS, and that the actions here before the board are...
You find those substantive difference in the findings that were made in 2000, I don't know, was that 2009?
I think December 2009, you re-adopt the findings that were made in 2009, and then would approve the EPOD permit application, as well as the subdivision approval.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I guess for, with respect to PB 1506-2, I'd like to make two motions. The first motion I'd like to make is with respect to Seeker, and I move that we, we, is it remand, is that the right word?
Re-adopt.
Re-adopt, okay, thank you. Re-adopt the findings from PB 080...
Okay, hold on, wait, I got to write this down. Re-adaption of PB...
0805, the findings from PB 0805-1's Seeker.
Can we actually make that an exhibit?
Yeah.
And make it part of the record?
Yep, you're welcome to. And I, actually, I encourage it, I think that's a great idea.
The findings of which will be attached to the, to this particular resolution. A second motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
I actually need to make three resolutions. The second one, Mr. Chairman, with respect to PB 1506-2, is I move approval of, subdivision approval, subject to zoning board of appeals approving the variance associated with this subdivision.
Seconding him, Mr. Chairman.
We also, wetlands, steep slope, did you say?
Yeah, I just want to do that one first, and then we've got to do the EPOD.
I think they're all...
No, I want to, we want to do that one, just the subdivision approval, and then I want to do a third one, which is the EPOD permit for five years, so I'd like to do it in three, if we could, because the other one's subject to...
Well, no, I think we're, the condition is that the EPOD permit will last for five years, but I don't think we're, we're not, we're not making separate motions.
Jake, can you just make it with a contingency?
Okay. All right, so I'll withdraw my, my motion. With respect to PB 1506-2, I approve, I move that we approve subdivision approval, wetlands, deep slope, woodlot, floodplain, water course, environmental protection overlay, district permits.
Wait, what's going in?
You, because, let's go through this for a second, theoretically, you wouldn't want to make, don't, you wouldn't want to make the EPOD permit contingent on the zoning board, because in theory, what could happen is, the zoning board could say...
That's what I was trying to do in the first place.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because Allen had approached us. No, I understand, Jake.
That's what I wanted to do in the first place, is just do a subdivision approval, subject to the zoning board, and then do the EPOD as a, as a...
Agreed.
So, that's why I wanted to do it that way, in the first place.
Start all over.
All right, well, hold on, we don't have paperwork for two separate things, and then, I mean, or, you want me to do this?
We will write up the decision as we always do.
All right, I can, I can make it work on this piece of paper, then.
Okay.
I'm going to make this one subdivision on this side, and then all the EPOD, this is A, this is B, so A, all right. So, we're going to, we're back to what you said before, which is A, which is subdivision...
I'm going to un-withdraw my...
Yes.
I'll just make the motion again, Mr. Chairman, with respect to PB 1506-2, I move subdivision approval, subject to the zoning board of appeals issuing, are positive for approving the variance for, with respect to the area variance that they have to approve.
I still second him, Mr. Chairman?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Seeing none, subdivision approval carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move with respect to PB 1506-2, I'd like to approve reissuance of an EPOD permit for a period of five years.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Seeing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for the minutes to reflect that the board understood that the subdivision approval was conditioned on having an EPOD permit, and that the EPOD permit, procedurally, the EPOD permit should have been approved before the subdivision, and just the board's understanding that the subdivision was approved knowing the EPOD permit was going to be approved? Because the subdivision...
There's no reason to.
The subdivision requires an EPOD permit.
But if it, if the, if the subdivision fails, then you still need an EPOD permit.
Correct.
So, it doesn't matter whether there's a subdivision or not, the project still needs an EPOD permit, so it doesn't really matter whether there, it's, whether there's two parcels or one parcel.
That's correct, but in order to have a subdivision, you need an EPOD permit to have a subdivision, so it's, it's a very fine distinction, but in order to have a subdivision, you need to have an EPOD permit already approved. But to have a building permit, you also need an EPOD permit, so even if the subdivision is not approved, you'll, the applicant will continue to have an EPOD permit, but just have the record reflect that the EPOD permit is in place at the approval of the subdivision.
You sure you're just not trying to lawyer up on us here?
I, you know, it's my favorite thing to do.
Sometimes I don't, I just don't know if you're fooling or what, I just...
You have a pretty sick sense of humor.
Well, yes, if you knew Board Member Richie, you'd, you know. Thank you very much.
All right.
We voted, we, do we vote?
That was, that was fun.
Wait, yeah, we voted, right, yeah, everyone voted on everything.
Did I vote? Thanks for, thanks for reminding me.
Thanks for being present.
Do you want this back?
Well, my age, I can do one of those minutes now and then, can't I? Where's John? We can do those once in a while, can't we, John? Those kind of I-forgot minutes?
All right, the next case.
Need an engineer to open these.
Everything okay back there with the...
Now, we're up to like 27 or 30.
The Chinese fingerboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chinese finger torture thing.
Newport's done.
You guys done over there, we can...
I'm in bed. You're back.
Can I read the next?
Just a sec.
Hello.
Not paying attention. PB 1506-3, upon the matter of request by Daniel Graydon for signage approval to install new facade and signage on premises 5370, St. Paul Boulevard, and the C Business District.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Holy cow.
Thank you.
Is this a menu, or a gift certificate for dinner?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Daniel Graydon, owner at Somerville Grill, 5370 St. Paul Boulevard. I have a three-part project I'm proposing tonight. First phase of the project would be to reface the front of the building, I've supplied some pictures as well, and if you take a look at them, you could see it, we're definitely in need of a facelift over at the Somerville Grill. What I'm proposing for the front of the siding is to be replaced, just on the front of the building, with a vinyl material, very similar in appearance to what you see on the building right now. Would be the same color, same width, and that would be the first phase of the project. Second phase of the project would include replacing the glass block that you see there in the entryway, as well as the door, bringing the front door flush to the front of the building, and then installing an interior door that would serve as a barrier against the elements, basically, and save me on some heating and air conditioning costs as well.
Bless you.
After some discussion with the fire marshal, it was also determined that I would need another egress from the dining room area, so I provided a couple of more pictures for that. As you enter the building, there would be an emergency exit just to the left that would be accessible from the dining room area, and aid, and people's escape should there become an emergency. Third part of the project would be to put a, replace the current lighted sign out there with a lighted awning and sign that carries our Somerville Grill logo, and the dimensions and so forth are on the sign, and after several revisions, I've decided to go with revision number four, as you see in the packet. I've also provided some specs on the lighting, the hardware to be used on the doors. I don't think included in our workshop was the estimate on the emergency door, so there's some information there as well, on the size of the door, type of hardware to be used, and actual composition of the door itself. That being said, I mean, it's, it's pretty much a facelift I think we're much in need of over there. The last thing I've included in my packet is a letter from my neighbor directly across the street. I've also included a picture of their house, as you can see from the front of the building. There was some concerned voice, I guess, about, you know, would it be too bright, it's a residential neighborhood and so forth, but, I mean, they would probably be the persons most greatly affected by the, by the awning, which I really don't think is going to project light, it's just going to illuminate the awning, and they're very much in favor, and they've given me a letter to indicate that they're in favor of this project. And that's pretty much what I have for you, unless you have any questions of me.
Jay, any questions? You're going to have one or two of the eight-foot bulbs.
Pardon me, can you say that again?
How many of the eight-foot bulbs are you going to have behind the awning?
Okay, I can tell you that. Okay, on this page here that I have from Jamie Rollier of Kremersign, gives the actual specs on the, on the lighting for the awning. What's behind the awning is 24 lamps, 110 watts per bulb, they each put out 6,750 lumens, they're fluorescent, they're T12, there's a total of 24 lamps behind the awning. The awning's 40 feet in length, so obviously, that lighting will be spread out over a great distance, and will also encompass the round portion in the front over the doorway.
Jay, anything else? That seems like a lot of lamps for, for illuminating the, that area. I mean, normally, you're not supposed to spill into the, you know, into the, into the street, you're supposed to have a, what do you call those, the grading, to show what the lighting is. That, I, I don't know, it seems like a lot of lamps to illuminate that. You're really just trying to, that's a, you know, a diffuse structure, and you're trying to get the light through it, correct?
Right, yes.
It's actually behind it.
It's backlit.
The, the total length is 40 feet?
Yes.
So, that means that if you have eight, or if you have 24 of them, that's three, 24 of them, eight, it's five across, five across, say...
Yeah.
And almost five stacked in there. I just, I, I, how did you come up with that many?
I, I did not, there was a spec provided to me by the people that manufacture the awning.
What, what perhaps we're not considering, and it may be unknown to us, is how much of that light from behind will radiate through the awning?
Density, you mean, the green color?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, it's got a real tight weave, is it, what's the fabric?
Oh, it's like a vinyl fabric.
I'm not too concerned about what, I know a lot of it's going to get trapped in the, in the awning, but a lot of it's going to radiate down under the, under the building, on the front of the building, and then down to the ground.
Yeah.
And then, I'm just, it, I just wonder how, what the lumens are, or what the, there's a, I can't think of the word right now. It's a photometric, the photometric spill from that is normally what you'd have in this kind of situation, it seems like it's overkill for, for this particular project, so, but...
You know, I did ask them about that, about the number of lights and so forth in there, and she indicated to me that because this green color was so much darker, she said if you had like a yellow or an orange, there would be less light required behind the awning, but because it's a green color, and there's not a lot of white lettering portion to it, that, you know, they were recommending more lighting behind it to get it, make sure that it was lit properly.
Is the, is the whole thing green, and then there's white letters over it, or where the white letters are, is there nothing behind it?
Where the white letters are, okay, that, that's where they just take, and they etch out the color of the green to make it white, and of course, then the light is going to then project through, you know, more brightly.
It's a solid vinyl fabric, in my experience, and it, it glows, the color, but it's going to be pretty subtle with the green, because it's such a dark color. Where the white is will be slightly lighter than what the rest of it is, and I believe that there's some overlap of the fixtures, because there's dark ends and the... and the four inches of light doesn't really work, so you've got some overlap, which is why there's probably more, so that the light is continuous behind it. I was trying to do the math myself as to how they laid it out. 24 fixtures, there are probably two bulb fixtures, which means 12 fixtures. I'm not quite sure how they're exactly laid out, but, and I'm not sure if they're four-foot fixtures or eight-foot fixtures, and.
Do, do these lights go off at the end of business?
Yes, I have, at the end of business, I have an automatic timer that automatically shuts the lights off and turns them back on again in the morning.
What time is that normally?
Normally 2:00 AM.
And they don't go on again until dusk the next day?
That's correct.
Probably four-foot fixtures, which would lead to 12 with an overlap. You're probably using six of them, and they probably kind of overlap some way.
From the way I'm looking at it, I think you're going to get more light inside those windows than anywhere.
I have the windows tinted.
Jay, any other questions on the lights?
Well, I just don't know how, I mean, there's, there's, there's 93 different ways that you can make this light come out there. I mean, I don't know if it's facing, you know, the fixtures are facing up so that it, it just lights the.
They're going to be, generally, in my experience, they're mounted to the vertical rails in the back, and they shine forward. There's an egg crate in the bottom. I mean, it can be open. Generally, people would egg crate it to keep the birds out, but I don't know, I don't have a sectional cut on this thing. And there's very little light that comes down. It's mainly in there just to make the thing glow, and the letters outstanding, outstanding. There is some light that spills down.
That's all I have.
Rich?
No questions.
Ray?
No questions.
Michael? Mary? This time I'd like to open up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion of this hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the board or concerns regarding the lights?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering if, if, because we're not requiring, you know, a photometric map or anything like that, if the, if the development services after it saying, if they can take a look at it and maybe determine whether or not you're going to, you're going to take a few of the lights out because it's just too bright, you've got a, you've got a meter or whatever. Is that something that you'd be okay with? I mean, I, I don't, I want the sign to look nice, but I don't want it to, I don't want the building to irradiate.
Yeah, it, you wouldn't be able to impose a condition where you're leaving it to the discretion of town staff or the code officer without putting any sort of metric or threshold in the approval as to what they think is reasonable. It's for the board to determine if, if you think that there needs to be a condition on the approval.
I mean, our lumen calculations are, it's generally based on site lighting, not signage. I granted that this awning maybe is a bit of a hybrid, but, I mean, I generally think that you're looking for, you know, dark sky compliant and no spill onto adjoining properties. You're certainly going to get some, a bit of spill onto the sidewalk, in this case, in front of the building, but it's directed downward, and the top, I would think, is what, you know, would meet some of the dark sky compliance. But.
Yeah, I mean, but I also don't want to say if the spillage is excessive because that's a, that's very subjective.
I mean, right now, the neighbor directly across the street, I'm assuming they're cognizant of the application, has said that they're in favor of it.
Right, right.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I'd also like to say that, as you're looking at the front of the building, to the right is my parking lot, and to the left, I own half of Third Street. I quitclaim deeded that a while back. So I basically own that little lot on that side, which is just the old abandoned Third Street, and then the other side of the lot is my parking lot. And then, as you can see, if you look at that one picture over the, my neighbors across the street, it's quite a distance, and I, I can't see that, that awning spilling light over that far.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm being a.
Do I see them being eight-foot, eight-foot lights?
I just want to make sure that.
Did you see that in their packet? Yes, they're eight-foot.
Just don't see an issue with this one. I mean.
Good.
It's green, it's going to go down, it'll be on the sidewalk. You own a property on either side. I.
Okay.
We're not measuring it? I, I.
The only reason I'm, I work with light all the time. My business is lighting. And I know that you, you can't just look at this and say it's not going to happen one way. It's going to happen one way or the other. Nobody did any kind of ray traces on this, I hope, because I certainly didn't. So ray tracing is what you'd do with light. Never mind, never mind. It's way too. All right.
The, the nice thing about the overspill, as we may say, or whatever it's called, is that with his abundancy of property, that it, it certainly would create a little more of a safety measure at night, people coming out, going to their cars.
Well, the light's certainly not shining up.
No.
And if anything, it's shining down, and I think that I'm satisfied that,
Whatever the spill's going to be.
Whatever it is that occurs is going to be appropriate. We need to make a motion as it relates to seeker.
Sign needs seeker.
Yeah, this is a type 2 action. You don't have an EAF, do you?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. Signed as approval.
Not going to, it's a type 2.
Type 2, so you don't need to do anything further.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, upon the matter of PB 1506-3, upon the matter of request by Daniel R. Graydon for signage approval to install new facade and signage on premises 5370 St. Paul Boulevard in a C business district, I move approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for investing in erratically.
Thank you for leading us to this as well. This is really good.
You too.
Thank you.
I'm so hungry, I just needed to stop talking about the restaurant. All right, next case.
PB 1506-4, upon the matter of request by David Edman for floodplain and coastal erosion environment, coastal erosion environmental protection overlay district EPod permits to demolish and reconstruct a new deck on premises 4977 Culver Road in an R1 residential district.
You guys playing hangman?
Yeah, you can come on up and. Welcome.
Good evening. Do I need to wait for the other gentleman to come back?
David, before you begin.
Yes, sir.
I apologize for my reference to your stuff last week.
No offense. I appreciate the observation, though. Thank you.
You know what, you know what George Carlin said?
I'm not sure.
He said a lot of stuff.
But one of the things he said was, how come my stuff is, and your is stuff?
It's our stuff?
What? More stuff?
Uh, you can begin.
My name is David Edman, 4977 Culver Road. I'm here on the matter of request by myself for a floodplain and coastal erosion EPod permit to demolish my deck and reconstruct a new one at my primary residence on 4977 Culver Road. I'll try to make this quick on you, Mr. Chairman. I realize you're hungry and I don't want to hold that up.
I'm never too hungry to listen to an applicant.
Well, thank you for your time. Yep, I've submitted a full application. I have already received full Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency full certification. They guided us very kindly on the specifications to which we had to build the deck after construction of the existing deck, which is, let's just say, seen better days. There is concern that my deck may not last another year, as was noticed and commented on at the meeting that I was here at a few weeks ago. So simply, we're just looking to remove the existing deck, install a new deck made of composite material, AZEC specifically, and extend the existing deck approximately eight to nine feet.
Did you get a copy of the letter from the Conservation Board?
Which letter do you refer to?
Uh, it was June 3, and it, it talked about when you're working with the concrete, being sure that the washwaters don't reach the lake.
That letter doesn't sound familiar to me.
Okay. They, they reviewed it, and, and a couple of the concerns they had is, one, to make sure that you're aware of the Joint Commission's compact on lake level changes. And as a resident there, I'm sure you're quite aware of that.
Yes, I've heard some rumors.
They also wanted you to be.
Pass it to the applicant.
Aware. We'll give you a copy of it, that when you're doing concrete work, to be very careful of the wash and make sure it doesn't reach the lake level. And that any changes you make, obviously, you have to address with the planning department, any changes from what we have before us, so.
Certainly.
I thought those were all good comments and things that you need to be made aware of, so.
I appreciate you making me aware. I'll be cognizant of it. Are there any questions of the board?
I'm all set for this application. Anyone?
I'm all set also. Anyone to this end? No? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input. This time, anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so. Seeing none, we'll close public input.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do seeker at this point.
Thank you. Well, let's, oh, sorry, I should have summarized this a little bit. So we have a short environmental assessment form, of which the Part 2, we have found no or small impact that may occur. As far as the Part 3, determination of significance, the findings that we have here, the action involves a request of an EPod permit to construct a replacement deck on a property located in the town's floodplain and coastal erosion area protection district EPods. The applicant has already received the required Article 34 Coastal Erosion Management permit from the New York State DEC. The deck will extend no more than 20 feet from the home and the lakeside, although the proposed deck will extend further than the existing deck. There is ample distance to the water's edge and is consistent with other decks in the area. Consequently, the proposed deck will have minimal to no impacts, impacts on environmental conditions within the coastal erosion hazard area or any other environmental factors addressed under seeker. That is a summation of our findings.
Peter, do you do the radio ads for the cars that, real quick ones?
I'm auditioning silently, but. So that's our findings. If there's anything that anyone wishes to amend or modify, they may do so at this time. Seeing none, Jay, move on to motion.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to PB 1506-4, in the matter of seeker, I move that this is an unlisted action, negative declaration.
Second.
Who's that, Plukas?
Yes.
Or McDowell?
He threw his voice.
Sounded a lot like.
It did.
Rich. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries with one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. PB 1506-4, upon the matter of request by David Edman for floodplain coastal erosion environmental protection overlay district EPod permits to demolish and reconstruct a new deck on premises 4977 Culver Road in an R1 residential district, I move approval.
Second.
Really an R1 residential district along the lake there?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for investing in erratically.
Can you have it done by the fourth?
I really hope so. This process is taking a little longer than I expected, so sooner's better. We're going to start tomorrow. If I can have my permit, will I get it now? I'll see you then.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
We can, if we, if we screw in a few of the deck boards, can we have a beer?
I don't even have to do any of this. Thanks again.
All right, the last matter before us.
The zoning board of appeals referral for 160 Dunsmore Road, planning board to declare their intent to be lead agent.
I believe our intention is.
Pursuant to seeker.
To declare ourselves as lead agent? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Is there anything else we need to do in regards to this?
Is Kathy going to work with the town on getting out the notices to the other?
Yeah, Michelle already has the notices, the letters printed for folks to get them out, and that'll start, obviously, the 30-day clock. And then, just quickly, the process will be, you guys have the seeker, this board has the seeker determination, and it would go back to the zoning board for their variance application after that matter, and then come back, depending on what happens at the zoning board, come back to the planning board for their subdivision, their EPod permits, and their site plan. So this is the first in a long, you know, a longer process.
The only thing, so we, we need to hold on to this then, which is the. The error of law form?
Yes, yes.
And if there's things you want as part of the seeker determination after it comes, when it comes time for the public hearing and the seeker, when the 30 days passes, you can certainly have, you know, have at it if there's things that you'd like to see that aren't there, so. But this is a complete application by what they've, they've submitted.
The last thing that we need to look at, if there is nothing more regarding Dunsmore, are the meeting minutes?
Well, second, Peter.
Mary and Rich were absent. So we have one, two, three, four people, so.
We can do it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. Second?
All those in favor? Any opposed, say nay? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.